Okay, thank you. This is Carol Thomas, Chair of the Needham Board of Library Trustees. My last meeting to start before we have a new chair. First, I'd like to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. When I call your name, would you please respond in the affirmative? And make fate director.
Yeah.
And Dimitri Kariakas, Assistant Director.
Yes, I can hear.
Jeff Arnold, Recording Secretary and Reference Staff Member, Daniel Power, Technology Specialist.
Yep.
And I see we have a lot of other staff members present as the Reference Supervisor Sarah. Breen is here and we have, where are my? We have Paula Dogen, she is Children Supervisor present, we have. I'm losing my mind. Hello. What's the matter with me? Deborah Lovett, who was Supervisor of Circulation, yes, can hear me? You're muted, but yes, okay.
Excuse me, I am here.
Yes, I see you're here, you can hear me, though, I guess I couldn't just hear you.
No, yes, excuse me.
And I'm here and Geraldo Kerr is here.
Yes, right here.
Yes, KK Hill.
Here.
Rick Hardy.
Yeah.
Tom Harkins.
Here.
Tom Pettit.
Here.
And JP Alcoff.
Here.
All can hear me and seem to be present. All Library Trustees, Joan Smith, I see is with us, thank you, thank you for being here, Joan. This is just my little intro. Good evening, it's now 7:03 PM on April 14th, 2021. This is an open meeting of the Needham Board of Library Trustees. This meeting is being conducted remotely due to the state of emergency in the Commonwealth and consistent with Governor Baker's Executive Order of March 10, 2020. The order allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded. This meeting will allow public comment by means of the chat function only. For this meeting, the Needham Board of Library Trustees is convened by Zoom app. As posted on the town's website identifying how, you know, how you may join in. I believe it stated this time chat function is that means. All participants tonight are participating by video conference. Please be aware that participants that others may be able to see you and take care not to unintentionally screens, screen share your computer, anything you broadcast may be captured by the recording. For effective and clear conduct of our business tonight, for compliance with the Governor's Executive Order and to ensure accurate meeting minutes, I will restate these ground rules. I will introduce each speaker or the chair will, because we will have a new chair very early in the meeting. Each speaker on the agenda, after they conclude their remarks, the chair will invite members by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. To the extent practicable and within the bounds of open meeting law requirements for conducting a virtual meeting, we will keep the meeting style informal as we try to do when we are meeting in person. Please remember to mute your computer when you're not speaking for better reception all around. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps create accurate minutes. And for any response, it's helpful if you will wait until the chair recognizes you so that we don't speak over each other. If you wave and the chair doesn't see you, as I tend not to do, hopefully somebody will speak up and say so that I ought to be, I or the new chair ought to be noticing. After members have spoken, the chair will afford public comment by, as I said, means of chat. There can be a question or a comment. After identifying his or her name and address only. The Assistant Director will monitor the chat box and alert the chair to submissions there. Those chat submissions will be recorded and become part of the official record of this meeting. Each vote taken in this meeting is required to be conducted by roll call vote, a requirement of the Governor's Executive Order of March 10, 2020. And now I'm going to request a motion to automatically continue this meeting to the date May 11th, 2021 at 7:00 PM with the same Zoom ID number, our next regularly scheduled meeting. If any technical difficulty should arise tonight to keep us from completing our meeting. Could I have that motion from someone, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Anna, second.
Second.
Thank you, Tom. Okay, all in favor, Tom?
Aye.
Jay?
Aye.
Anna?
Aye.
Rob?
Aye.
Kay?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
And I also am in favor. No one opposed, so that passes unanimously and we'll move on to the meeting itself. I'd like to just recognize that we have newly elected trustees, reelected, should I say. And they are, would you just raise your hand so everybody can see you, Anna and Jay?
Congratulations.
Yeah. And I assume you both were able to get sworn in today?
Yes.
Yes, excellent, excellent. It's a bit of a rush this for the April meeting to get sworn in after the election, if you're up for election.
Preserving my record of not being the first person to lose an uncontested election.
Well. Yeah, that would be something, well, you know, there are write-in votes, Jay, so if everyone felt strongly, you know, it could have happened, but it didn't, of course. So I guess the first thing we need to do, which will be the last thing I do tonight probably for leading the meeting is to ask for a a motion to adopt a slate of new officers for the Board of Library Trustees. Would, Rick, would you be willing to put that forward? I think we've kind of agreed on who is available to do these jobs. Are you?
Yeah, so moved, I guess.
And you name names since we don't have that in front of us as the slate, do you know?
I'd have to go.
Okay. Would it, someone else who does have it would like to put that motion out there? Jay?
So moved.
Nominate, I nominate.
Well, I don't.
Rob Pettit as Chair. KK Hill as Vice Chair. Anna Geraldo Kerr as Secretary for the coming year. That's the motion that I'm hoping to hear.
Second. So moved, second.
Okay.
Whatever has to be done.
All right, Jay, you can second.
I'll second.
Thank you, okay, okay, all in favor? Tom?
Aye.
Jay?
Aye.
Anna?
Aye.
Rob?
Aye.
Kay?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
And Carol Thomas as Chair, former Chair. I unanimously adopted and congratulations and thank you to everyone who's taking on these jobs for the coming year. I'm going to turn this meeting over to our new chair, Rob.
All right, thanks, Carol, I appreciate it, it's a great honor to be Chair for the next year. It's only been two years I've been elected to this board. So there's still much to be learned and I'm sure that I'll have lots of questions and items for you over the coming year, but I think it'll be a year of a great change for the library and something that I'm really looking forward to. So I will start the agenda off today with minutes from the March 9th meeting that Ann circulated, did any comments to those minutes?
I did.
I had one comment, oh.
Okay, Jay.
Just with regard to the paragraph about the new strategic plan. There's a statement at the end that Ann's retirement and the transition to a new library director should not affect the strategic plan. I think that was not a conclusion, that was an opinion, I don't, it's not an opinion that I share then or now. So I just would want to make that probably clear.
Doesn't say who made that, voiced that opinion, so it makes it a little harder to be sure who said it.
I think, I think Ann suggested it and we hadn't really fully considered it, so I don't think it was a resolved question.
I see. I see, okay. Maybe we should just.
And they think it's resolved and some others may think it's resolved, but you know.
Do you propose to take that out, that sentence out?
How about the consideration was given to whether Ann's retirement and the transition to a new library director might affect the strategic plan?
Okay, Jay, do you have that, excuse me, not Jay, Jeff, do you have that?
Yes, and I can get it from the Zoom videos.
And I can, you know, communicate with you also, if everyone agrees, I'm a, you know, I think that's my memory of.
I think that's, that's fine.
Sounds good.
My, my input was having to do with the MacIver and diversity programs on page six and page seven. Anna, maybe you can speak to that because it's really your.
Yeah, no, thank you, Carol. Page six, diversity, under diversity programs, we have listed the mariachi band, which is accurate. But also we need to make a note on page seven, number 10, under MacIver series because we were kind of doing, you know, killing two birds with one stone, so they need to be, because we could have one sentence at the end saying that, you know, kind of repeating on March 7th as part of the MacIver series, the mariachi band performed or something like that. So that is acknowledged that, that, that that event was part of MacIver, the MacIver series, that's what's missing.
I think what started this off is that under diversity programs on page six, it says the final MacIver program in Slavon at Massachusetts and Needham actually wasn't the final MacIver because the mariachi band was the final one, is that correct?
Oh, that's true, yep, that is, yeah, we need to remove the final.
So if we just.
The final is actually the mark, yeah.
Yeah, if we just took out the words final MacIver and inserted celebration of after International Women's Day on the third line, if we just put a comment and said both MacIver series programs.
That'll work.
It would probably take care of it on that, on that item. A change in, under number 10 on page seven.
Okay.
As well. To coincide. Okay.
And go ahead, Carol, for that change.
Excuse me?
Did you have a further change on?
That is it, no, that is all I have.
And Dimitri?
Dimitri has his hand up.
Yeah, no, I just, Diane was trying to get your attention, Carol's first and now, so I just want to make sure she can, she can jump in there and she has something to say.
Sure, Diane?
No, I don't now, I said, I wasn't recognized as being here, I just wanted to make sure you knew I was, if I did.
I'm sorry, Diane, you're right, you're absolutely right.
That's okay.
We can go back and include your, and you can hear us and we can hear you. So that's excellent, thank you very much, I said hello, but then I.
That's okay.
Yeah, my apology.
Do we have further comments to the March 9th minutes?
Yeah.
Ann?
Okay, back to the new strategic plan, if you just take the last sentence out of what's written.
That, that.
Does it better than trying to.
That's fine with me, Ann, that's, that's fine with me.
Okay.
Okay, any, anything else? Right, in that case, do we have a motion to accept the March 9th minutes as amended?
So moved.
And do we have a second?
Second.
All right, I'll do a roll call vote, Carol?
Yeah, I.
Rick?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Anna?
Aye.
Jay?
Aye.
Kay?
Aye.
And myself, aye. So those are approved unanimously as amended.
I'm wondering whether Rob gets some sort of prize for his first roll call, something to remember the occasion.
Congratulations, Rob.
Job, job well done.
Feels great. Thank you, so we'll move on to the next item in the agenda, which is the Director's Report, and I'll turn it over to Ann for that.
I believe under personnel that I'm talking here about interviewing candidates, but Dimitri can fill it in for sure. You've actually hired some people, have you not?
Yes, we've hired three new people in the Circulation Department. Hired, it'll take HR two to three weeks to process all their paperwork and all that, but we made offers, they've been accepted. So those three positions have been filled. There's a children's position that's open, we had a couple of candidates, they both, we liked both of them, we offered it to one, they declined, we offered it to the second one, they declined, they're really looking for full-time work, so they, they took us all the way through interview process, we have other candidates, Paul and I are interviewing next week, so we should have that one hopefully wrapped up pretty quickly, I hope, but yeah, three people in Circulation for sure, I'm sure the Circulation staff will that when they come on board.
I have a motion to accept the gift list.
Oh, moved.
Second.
All right, I'll go through the list, Carol?
Hi. Hi, did you hear?
Rick, do you vote to approve?
Aye, yeah.
Tom?
Aye.
Anna?
Aye.
Kay?
Aye.
Jay?
Aye.
And myself, aye. So the gift list is approved?
I don't have anything else on here that isn't covered under an item in the agenda, so if anybody has any question about anything we've talked about so far, I'd be happy to address that, but anything else is covered under an agenda item.
I just had, I'd like to learn more, Danielle, on the niche, what was highlighted in the Director's Report? That commenting about the niche.
Academy.
Yeah, that you have.
The, the list, the database from the, in the, under reference. Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Are you saying you like the name, is that it?
No, I'd like to learn a little bit more about it. Just.
Reference, reference.
I subscribe to it, so it's a tutorials database for like databases, so like Overdrive, which we got a lot of questions about all the time, and Canopy and Hoopla and all the other databases, but as well as like websites like email and Facebook and Zoom and things like that.
Yeah, and so, and I think there was a comment that it's going to be useful for the website as well.
Yeah, I think it's going to look really nice on the new website because it's like, we can link it to the website and embed it and things like that, so.
So this is where a patron could go in and, and learn a little bit more on how to use Overdrive instead of an interactive thing?
Yeah, it's like videos and text and things like that.
Nice, nice.
Great, yeah, may I, Rob?
Yes, absolutely, yep.
Yeah, so that's one thing we have been talking about at the website meeting was important, how to highlight and help people find and use the many databases that the library pays for and don't get used a lot, so you know, that's something we can all look forward to, having that sort of thing highlighted.
Will there be, Rob?
Go ahead, Carol.
Will there be other publicity for that new database? It seems like it'll really, I mean, I need, I need to go full-time on this new database. And.
Yeah.
Literally every one of our services, you know.
Yeah, we're working on getting it up to the current website, I'm still in the process of setting it up. And it will go on the current website and then, oh, I can promote it on social media too, definitely.
Yeah, that'd be great, and maybe in the papers, you know, send something out. Although I guess maybe that's not the way a lot of people learn, but the people like me who need the course the most, it might be where they hear about it.
Interesting to see that, how the.
Once it's fully set up, we can certainly put an article into our newsletter.
And.
That's maybe, yeah, yeah, that'd help.
And do you have?
Me, I have, is it Ann or Anna?
Sorry, Anna.
Oh, okay. Sarah, so I am too excited about this, I'm wondering, is, do you say, did I, I'm not sure if I understood this part, do you say there are going to be tutorials to learn, is this how that is going to be, how the learning is going to happen?
So it's like the tutorials that patrons would go through, so they're videos and texts that go step by step to learn the database.
That's, that, I'm definitely going to be there for that. And I'm wondering along the lines of Carol's suggestion, if the, if there will be a possibility to start doing like little videos, I'm thinking TikTok, I mean, forgive me, you know, I have a teenager, so now everything is TikTok or some snippets of videos about promoting it, so it's not only in the newsletter, which is reading, but it's also in the medium that they're going to actually be learning, right? So I wonder if that is a possibility now that we have a YouTube channel. Yeah. Perhaps that's another avenue.
And Jay, did you have a question?
I had a quick question concerning the hiring of those folks and a couple of people turned down because they're looking for full-time jobs. Does that cause us to reconsider whether our staffing, you know, has an appropriate amount of full-time people so that we can attract the best quality or it's, that's not relevant to this, I'm just curious.
People who have been, you know, who are placing, you know, they'll apply for everything that's out there. And you call them in for an interview and then you interview them, you actually offer it and they're like, you know, I was really actually hoping for a full-time job, so thank you so much, you know, it's not uncommon, Jay.
Okay, and we have, you know, an appropriate amount of full-time staff to do that work.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Fair enough, yeah.
We're, if we can get these three folks trained up before we, you know, we'll talk about reopening later and all, that'll be terrific, that'll be a huge help. But, but yeah, it's not uncommon, it's not uncommon, we interview people and for variety of reasons, they'll consider.
Yeah, I get it.
Far from home, it's not really what they, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep, and actually we'll have an agenda item today discussing the mix between part-time and full-time and whether or not we want to look into that and comparing ourselves to our peers in that respect. Did we have anything else under the Director's Report or should we move on to Building and Grounds? Okay, in that case, we'll go to Building and Grounds, Ann?
The really good news here is the elevator is fixed. Bad news is we're waiting for a state inspector to come out and let us ride. He's supposed to come up next week.
Great, I'm sure the staff is looking forward to that.
Absolutely.
Anything else in Building?
Been out since then. I was just going to put it in the record, this that the work order to fix the elevator went in on January 7th, '21. So all this time you've been without, it's a long time.
Yes, it is.
You know, I really, I have to hand it to everyone who was running up and down without that main elevator, getting, gathering thousands of requests, so.
I, I thought I'd lose some weight, but I didn't. I think it just made me hungrier.
All right, if we don't have anything else on Building and Grounds, we can move on to the financial reports?
I can report that the check, the second check for state aid payments is safely in the accounts at the town hall. I was notified yesterday that the check came or comes in electronic transfer, actually. So we now have $22,000 more, this is the largest amount of state aid I have ever seen, especially after people told me they didn't feel that we'd be getting any state aid this year. But.
Great news.
Yeah, yes, and it was mostly, the largest was due to the state legislature passing the, the amount of money that the MBLC requested.
And.
It doesn't always happen.
And may I, may I add?
Oh, yes, Carol.
And I think due to the advocacy of a lot of, a lot of in the library world who we wrote to our representatives and the leaders in the legislature, you know, really politicking for these these funds that are much needed. So I think, you know, it helps to be a participant in that process that worked out this year anyway.
So that's all I have on state aid.
Okay. And it looks like there's some movement on the trust funds for the website?
Yes, we've submitted the bill, the first bill from brand, from Sterling Brand Works, and I've gotten two or three notices that the first bill hasn't been paid yet. We're wondering, they should be getting it any day. As it's going through trust funds, it doesn't, they don't get paid as fast as regular bills do, they only get paid.
Why, why is that, Ann, just curious?
They, trust fund commissioners have to approve all the bills and they only meet once a month, just like the trustees here.
Oh.
Okay, let us know if we should communicate that to Sterling on how.
Thanks.
Anything else for financial reports or should we move on to the statistical? Okay, then I'll hand the floor over to Ann for this statistical report.
Yes, we have the February statistics compared to February 2020. 2020, 2020 sounds kind of visual. Thirty-two percent increase in downloadable circulation over February of 2020. However, the percentage of the whole remains around the same, it's been fairly close, 29, 30%. So the rest is still print, 70% still print. I don't see anything else there that's outstanding.
So it looks like the circulation numbers, considering that we are curbside only, remain quite robust. Thanks, thanks, everybody's hard work.
Curbside, yeah, service, it is a robust figure. And yes, thank you to everyone who's running around the library getting books for people. And we had a, an, not an incident today, but something happened today, a woman came from Wellesley to pick her books up here that she had requested at Wellesley, and we found out that Wellesley is going to send, apparently going to send all its reserves over to Needham for people to come pick up without telling us, so.
Because they're closed for the construction.
Not quite closed yet, but they will be at any moment.
Wow.
And then they're, they're going to open their, their, it may be temporary because they will be opening their branches, I'm told.
What is their construction situation at Wellesley, they're? I'm not familiar with what they're doing.
Interior changes, interior changes.
So the building will be closed for months?
Um, I forget, they're opening fall sometime.
All summer.
Yeah, it's close to the summer, it'll be sometime in the fall.
Thank you.
Exactly.
So, Rob?
Oh, yes, go ahead, Kay.
Yeah, I just, is that going to put an undo, but I know we're already kind of tight on, you know, doing all the curbside pickup is pretty demanding. Is that going to be having everyone coming from Wellesley to Needham, is this?
Oh, sure.
It will be interesting until the branches get opened up.
Even at that, the branches are pretty small, so I would anticipate, having seen this happen in other libraries, we're the neighbors and we're the closest neighbors, so yeah, we will.
We'll have. Deborah was going to contact Wellesley and see what they had to say, rather than have us just get our information from someone who was here to borrow a book.
Yeah. You know, when I, you know, when I order a book, it says I'd like to pick it up here or there, or, you know, I say Needham, of course, but you don't suppose that this woman just said she'd pick it up and Needham?
No, she told me she chose Wellesley as her pickup point and then told her it would be over here. And it was, it was here. We found it.
I had one question about the statistics. It, on copies, black and white pages printed. It says zero and for 2020, February, 2021. But aren't we still printing up to so many 15 pages or something for, upon request?
So that, that's when people email us, the reference department say, I have, they attach a document, take it and print this for us and we'll put it in an envelope for them and they'll pick it up curbside. But we don't have people, I think the figures before, like everybody using the internet computers and printing in-house. So we don't have anybody printing in-house because we don't have it in the log.
I got it. Okay.
Yeah.
Well, we've had, we've had people, correct me if I'm wrong, Sarah, but I think you've printed things, put them in bags for people.
Yeah, we have, but we haven't been keeping track of it.
I see. That's it. It's just not in.
It hasn't been that much then.
Okay.
It's, it's kept track by, by a different software. When people are printing in-house, it's kept track by Cyber Air and our time and rate management system. So because we're not doing it that way, there's, it, you know, the, the way to keep track of how many things are printed is different.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Anything else for the statistical report?
Just that. Book adding to the library keeps going. And next month, when you get a report, oh, maybe it won't be next month and the month after, there'll be a lot of withdrawals on it because we're, we're starting to do weeding again.
Great. Well, we will move on in that case to new business. And the first item is just discussing Anne's notice of her retirement and the process of selecting a successor. So I'll turn the floor, floor over to Carol for that.
I just wanted to make an, really an acknowledgement of Anne's announcement at the last meeting, which I think took us all a little bit. It, it went by a little too fast for us. But I was going to say, as, as we trustees absorb Anne's, your recent announcement of retirement as library director, and as we begin to work out a process for selection of the next library director, I was just led to reflect on what a really big job it is to lead the Needham Library. At normal times, it's busy, it's a busy bustling place, receiving on average 25,000 visits a month during the pandemic. Of course, the library direct, director is needed to have the tactical skills of a military officer to implement curbside delivery for thousands of requested library materials while continuing, you know, to provide staff for reference services and reduce staff and other hurdles due to social distancing and other reasons. And you've managed the library during a time of unprecedented change for libraries in general and for the Needham Library in particular. New technologies, economic ups and downs, increasing awareness of cultural values. As you, you mentioned, Anne, at the March meeting, you also served during the planning, funding and a construction of the current library, beautiful library building, and that entailed moving the library collection and staff to temporary quarters so as to continue providing library services during construction. You've have graciously agreed to stay on into the fall to see the library through the process of reopening the building for in-person services and to promote a smooth transition at the top, for which I really thank you. There'll be other occasions, you know, upon which we can enumerate and celebrate your many accomplishments and your dedication to the library in Needham. For now though, I really would like to express my own gratitude for your enormous contribution to the Needham community as library director.
Thank you.
Professor will have big shoes to fill.
Thank you. And I just, I'd just like to say, as much fun as I had, I couldn't have done it without great people working with me.
Oh, well, that's generous. Thank you. And that, turn it back to you, Rob.
Thanks, Carol, and I certainly second everything that you said. So I just wanted to open it up to discussion because obviously this is something that is really, really important to our library. And we need to really be thoughtful about the selection of a new director. Rick has very helpfully points me in the direction of the MBLC website, which has a, an entire section on library director selection and the trustees' role in that. I think that's more oriented towards libraries that where the, the board has hiring authority as opposed to our board where, under the town charter, the, the town manager has that authority, but subject to our, our vote. But it's a very helpful resource and it has framed the process really as a number of steps. The first step, I, I think for us, and I'll open this up to discussion as well, but the first step is going to be reaching out to Kate and Dave just to discuss the process itself and the timing. Obviously, as trustees, we'd like to be involved in that throughout the process and help out with it as in any way that we can. My thought was that myself as chair and Kay as vice chair could meet with Kate and Dave, and I've already preliminarily reached out to them. They'll be opening up after town meeting. They're pretty busy ahead of that. But we'd like to meet with them and get a better idea of their process, what they have in mind. Discuss the job description, which is going to be an important element, and also discuss where they're going to be posting this position, make sure that it's getting out there and that we're all on the same page. So that's really the first step. The second step is the job description, which I had circulated to the trustees from a previous one. We've gotten a couple of comments back on that. If you haven't taken a look at it, please, and let me know if you have any comments on it. But, sorry, go ahead, Anne.
I think you should know, if you're not aware, that there is a brand new job description that was done as part of the town's study of all positions in town.
Thank you. Was it in 2016 by any chance?
It was 20, 2020.
Okay. I have the 2016 one. We'll try to get the 2020.
It's old. I, I'll get it for you.
Thank you. Yeah, that would be very helpful. And Jay?
Uh, yeah. I have, I have a few thoughts about this, if you don't mind, if I could share. Sure. I reviewed what apparently was a 2016 job description. And I, and I've also spent some time, I thank Rick, you know, that was a useful site I, I knew of. And there are others as well. I put a link in the chat for some summary. But, but my, you know, my general impression is, is we should perhaps think about that 2016. I'll be curious to see what the more recent one looks like as a framework for us to think about it. But there's an opportunity, I think, for us to work on the job description because it's important. My, my personal sense is, is that there may not be an important responsibility we have as trustees than, than to help identify and, and, and find, you know, the, the next director of the library. And I'm influenced a little bit by some conversations I had with Dimitri as part of the new strategic plan where we met with a, a library consultant, Maxine Blighwise, and we met with Chuck Flaherty more recently after we learned of Anne's decision. And my impression is, is that, you know, deep thought and consideration should be given to the process and to the job description. And you should be aware that these folks, you know, conceivably can, you know, serve as a consultant. We've talked about hiring a consultant with regard to the strategic plan. But I, Chuck Flaherty believes, and I can, can agree, that the hiring of the director is more important than the next strategic plan. And it may make sense to bring them, you know, into the conversation to consider, you know, what, what's the best process for going forward. With regard to specific comments, I think we should, you know, give thought ourselves as to what exactly, looking at that draft that you shared as a, as a framework. But there's, there's more to be asked for in terms of personal qualities in addition to skills, things relating to vision and, and, and stuff that should be part of what we're describing when we, when we do that. So I just had a general feeling that, that I think, looking at other, at other job descriptions and considering more deeply what we're looking for can help us create, and maybe the 2020 has already done that. I haven't seen it, but a, but a thoughtful plan. And I think the trustee should give some thought as to whether, you know, you and Kay perhaps, you know, want to have a consultation with, with, with Chuck or Maxine to get a sense. One of the other side benefits, if you don't mind me saying, is that by talking to these folks, it may extend the outreach of people in the know who might know other people who might be, you know, candidates for the position. So anyway, those, those were, those were my preliminary thoughts about the job description that you distributed.
Would you like me to send it to everyone?
That would be, that would be great.
And I'll mention again, I put a link in the chat of some, you know, one thing among others that I thought you might find interesting and useful.
Thank you.
Good.
Anne, is that 2020 job description, is that something was actually adopted? Because the, the 2016 one is the one that HR sent when I asked for it.
I think that they did that probably because the, the new one hadn't been accepted yet. It's, it's, I mean, probably it was only accepted a week or so ago.
Oh, and this was probably about a week ago that I asked for it. So, yeah, okay. Thank you.
And Jay, just, you know, speaking personally, I, I like your idea of potentially getting a consultant involved. That's something that, you know, we might want to discuss over with Kate and Dave, but ahead of doing that, we could at least talk with Chuck and with the other person that you spoke with and get an idea of what their fees might be and what their process is. But it might be in the town's best interest to have a consultant engaged by the town to assist with the process. And I, I don't know if that, the funds for that would come out of, would come out of state aid or something else, but that, that might be worthwhile.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. I also think we should have a, a sit-down with Anne herself, who has sat in that seat for so many, many years and probably has, you know, a very good feel for what, what qualifications and other traits are necessary to navigate Needham in particular. So I think we would love to hear, have some input directly from her and maybe set something up to discuss that.
Anytime.
Yeah, I think that, that would be a very important step in the process and throughout the process.
Well, I assume, Anne, that you contributed to, to the last job description in terms of.
Absolutely.
Yeah, thanks.
But there may be some insights that, you know, are maybe not in there that are more, you know, about personal qualities or something that might be, you know, very helpful.
One of the big questions here is, you know, there's going to be sort of two levels of involvement. There will be some of us who are going to be involved at a more granular level. Perhaps even attending some interviews or preparing, you know, reviewing resumes as they come in. Ideally, this is what we would propose, I think, to Kate and Dave. And then presumably those who are involved with the process would report back to the board on a monthly basis and, you know, provide relevant information as it comes in. Just reading through the MBLC materials, if we formed a formal committee, then, you know, it would be subject to open meeting law. We'd have to provide notice of that. Just administratively, it could be a bit more complex, whereas if Kate and Dave invite two or three trustees to attend, but not to actually deliberate at, at those meetings, it might work better. Obviously, we would confirm that with town council. I just wanted to get everybody's thoughts on what, what sort of level of participation would be best and how many folks we should have getting involved in that more detailed basis.
I can tell you that the town has hired several managers in the past year. And at every board that, every group that interviewed with Kate had members of the appropriate board at meetings as voting members of the committee.
Voting members. Oh.
Well, that's it.
Go ahead, Carol.
But I just distinguish between being voting members of Kate's committee as opposed to being a subcommittee of the library trustees. And I think, you know, the, there's the distinction right there. We could be two or three members of the trustees participating on, on the Kate, the Kate committee.
Think you just need to wait and hear from Kate when she's ready and that's not until town meeting's over.
Yep.
Rob?
Yeah. Yes, Kate?
Yeah. I think we, you know, one of the things you're going to want to resolve with, with Kate and Dave at the beginning is how, how the process works. Because I'm, I, I'm anticipating that the trustees are not looking to have two or three votes among a committee that makes the decision as compared to what I think the trustees would prefer to have, you know, an approval right o, o, over the decision as determined, you know, collectively by the trustees, which would be part of a conversation with Kate in which I imagine that they would be, you know, interested in the same thing that is mutual approval ultimately between the town. But that's different than having a couple of votes on a, on a larger town committee clarifying what, what Kate understands, the, you know, the, the role ultimately of, of the trustees to mutually approve, you know, realistically. You know, a determination. And it's probably something that would be clear during the process that everybody would be on the same page. Anne, I don't know.
I am, I am of the opinion that you, as a committee, have the right of refusal.
Okay.
Right. And I've reviewed the town charter and the library bylaws, and that, that is essentially how it works is that Kate formally makes the proposed appointment, submits it to the library. At our next meeting, we then do an up or down vote as, as, as a board.
I assume as a practical matter, who she would be proposing is, is somebody that she knows the trustees would already be comfortable with.
Absolutely.
Kate knows what she's doing.
Yeah.
Okay. And Kay, I know you mentioned that you'd be open to sort of having this additional role in, in helping to meet with Kate and whatever committee that she has. Was it, was that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Interesting. Yeah.
And just for, for, for everybody else, do you think that the two of us is good? Should, should somebody else join that, that that group that Kate puts together or are you comfortable with Kay and I reporting back on a monthly basis?
It's going to be up to Kate as to how many people she picks to be on the interview committee. But if you want to go and talk to her as two people, that's fine. She'll listen to you.
Yep. Dimitri?
The only, and I guess I, you know, again, I have no involvement in any of this, but the only suggestion I would make and other groups have done this, you should have a staff member along with the search committee, you know. Who that is could be and all that could be determined later, but should have one staff.
And that's something the MBLC guidelines recommend to that as well as, as a key part of the process is that you want, you want staff buy into the process.
And I would assume Kate would, would know that and kind of initiate, make sure that there is a staff person, a staff leader.
In the last, in the last two times that I participated in picking the director, it was under the old system. And at that time, we had a search committee who made recommendations to the trustees. And at that, that search committee had, had representatives and the friends on it. And we did, but we didn't have a staff member and I think we probably should have.
I didn't, right.
And of course, that's, that's ancient history and it's.
29 years ago.
So I think we've got our, our next steps laid out for us. Kay and I will meet with Kate and Dave as soon as we can after town meeting. And we'll report back to you based on, on what we hear from that. So move on to the next agenda item unless anybody else has anything more on that topic. The next item under new business is the, the statements that were put forward by Needham, Needham Unite Against Racism Initiative. Uh, the next item under new business is the uh, the statements that were put forward by Needham, Needham Unite Against Racism Initiative. Um, and I'll turn the floor floor over to Anna on this, um, as Anna's been fairly fairly involved with that process.
Thank you, Rob. Oh, yes, uh, you may have seen the uh, several emails that we received last week or the last few days. Uh, regarding the select board requesting all of the different boards and commissions and groups around town to endorse or adopt uh, Nuari's vision statements and guiding principles. I don't know, did everybody, anybody, did everybody have a chance to look at them? I'm talking mostly trustees. Okay. Excuse me, just a minute. Um, too many Zoom meetings. Um, so, oh, and there is a backup document, which is a a report. I think it's thirteen page report where it details what Nuari has been doing since October. Nuari, just as a summary, is a an ad hoc group that was picked by the select board comprised by several diverse members from the community, from all different different areas of town, different backgrounds and and race and ethnicity and so on, to help uh, craft a vision for the town uh, to to um, deal with racism in town. Uh, so uh, this group has been working for several from since since October, and they've done, um, and you can, you're welcome to. They've been meeting maybe twice or three times a month since then. And all the meetings are also subject to open public meeting laws, so they are all recorded and available. And um, so they've arrived at this um, uh, visioning, vision statement, admission statement and and guidelines, the um, the guidelines that they've uh, the guiding principles. So um, I was able to meet with them. I attended their last meeting and Monday to um, offer some feedback. Uh, and um, telling them that, you know, there's great progress that they've made and a lot of effort and so on. But there are some uh, clear gaps in what they they have accomplished so far. So um, and we've had a great conversation. I I suggested some specific information and and ideas for them to consider, and they they've, um, and all of this is recorded, so you can um, see the exchange that happened and also their own conversation among the group. But they are trying to figure out, you know, how to fill those gaps. They acknowledge that that's the case, and and this work in progress, you know. So some of the recommendations from the background report that supports a guiding principles and statement are premature. And so that is what I I, so I'm here pretty much to um, make a motion. I don't know if this is the time. I'm also fairly new at this motion business, but uh, is to uh, for us perhaps to acknowledge that this has been, uh, this is work in progress, but not that it it may be premature for us to endorse or adopt the this uh, statements and guiding principles for the reason that, you know, it's still work in progress. It's not a definitive um, the the statements and that are making another definitive, they still need to be reworked. That's one thing. And also that the library, we have our own resolution and guiding principles that are very specific to the goals of the library. So, you know, it's a bit redundant, uh, in my opinion. So so I am um, making a motion to uh, to acknowledge that this is a work in progress and that the uh, working group is making tremendous effort, but we will um, we will just acknowledge this at this point in time. I don't know if there's the motion happens after discussion, and I forget how that
Yeah, we can. We can open it up to discussion now.
Someone has to second it.
Second, yeah, I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion of the motion?
Yeah, I mean, I would agree. I I um, you know, I've read it and so forth, and I don't think it's 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 a um, an incomplete document in the sense that it doesn't go forward in terms of, okay, what are you going to do? What's the plan here? It's it's it 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 says all the good words, but how do you back it up with with action? Uh, and we we you don't, you don't see that. So I think that's 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 what's missing is there's no accountability or actual responsibility from each of the um, segments of the town government to 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 address uh, the these issues. So I would agree.
Uh, Jay?
Uh, yes, I was also at that last meeting, Anna, in which you, you know, presented your your suggestions. I was listening to it and and I and I I I agree as well with, you know, supporting it and expecting that they're going to have a a refined version. Uh, I think to Rick's point that uh, we do have to translate it into action, which may mean, for example, in connection with the uh, uh, library director position, whether we what consideration to be given in order to recruit for diversity, because sometimes you do, you do need to to make extra efforts in in order to, you know, broaden the talent pool uh, in order to, you know, accomplish that goal uh, of of seeking diversity. And so that would be an action step for us to follow in connection with this, you know, uh, vision statement.
Yeah, absolutely. And that actually is what I was thinking as we were discussing the interview process or the the recruiting process for the next director, you know, what are one of the questions I would have is about inclusion and equity. How do they have what experience they have? How do they manage? You know, how do will they handle issues that come up? I mean, and so on. So that's a very integral part of the role of the director. So yes, I totally agree.
Carol?
I I didn't, I'm not clear, Anna. Whether you disagree and feel that the with the um, the vision statement and the guidelines and feel those are incomplete, or whether you feel that the draft report was, didn't follow certain um, protocols that would have made it a better report and more definitive.
Oh, yeah, let me let me clarify. Thanks for that. Um, both, actually. The short answer is both. The guiding principles and the vision statements they need. Um, in my opinion, again, this is from my equity and inclusion professional lens for a couple of decades old. Um, and I feel very comfortable and confident about this uh, feedback. Um, is that the the statements need to be in present tense, and they're all in in future tense. So right there, um, it's a maybe a technicality, but it's it's um, for example, if you're talking about the library is committed to, you know, as opposed to will be committed to. So is the implication is that is there is a future that is not here, when this this type of work is or this type of commitment is ongoing. That's one. And the other one that is really um, a red flag in my book is um, the expectation is at the bottom of the statement, it says that uh, to eradicate racism. And that um, there there's research um, and many, many um, journals, peer reviewed journals, that that is impossible. Uh, is we manage and mitigate the effects of racism. We don't get rid of it. It doesn't go away. And this is for all people, not certain people, everyone. So so I don't want, um, my concern is that we are uh, communicating false expectations to the community because it's not only about reporting about the uh, what the progress of the group, right? This is what they've done so far. It's also, we're also in parallel educating the community. Where this is what we're putting out, so they're going to read it, and they're going to have false assumptions that we're going to get rid of something that is not the case. So so we have to be very careful what we're promising. So that's the statements. And in terms of the report, if you see there's the key takeaways and there is the uh, due to the key takeaways, they have recommendations. Um, two things there. The um, those assessments, those those recommendations are lacking community input. They've only relying on one on the 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 directors or the, for example, the police chief, the the superintendent of schools and the housing authority. So it's the 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 lead, the heads of the of the of the groups. And um, and some reports that have been done by the town, but there that's a one sided. That's a one sided report. You need to have uh, community input, so the recipients of the services to see if the if the recommendations make sense, right? They're missing that. So so they agree to that. Right? And they also are missing a um, they, in order for us to engage into, if we were to do this as a as a group, we all need to first have a foundational knowledge of what the topics we're going to talk about. Your interpretation of racism and my interpretation of racism may be different. So we need to have kind of like a retreat sort of sorts to all of us discuss these issues and understand them through the same lens. So then we make informed decisions with a shared understanding, and that hasn't happened. So to me, that is, those are the areas that I was trying to, you know, and I hope, I don't know if it was clear enough, but um, but I am not disagreeing with them. I'm just saying that what they've done needs to be worked on. Is that they are just started to scratch the surface. So I'm tentative to to endorse and adopt it because we will be sending the wrong message to the community, and the implications are really great.
Thank you.
Thanks. Uh, any any further discussion?
Yeah, question. What exactly could I read what what the motion is?
The motion is uh, that the town has asked all the boards and and commissions and committees to adopt or endorse the the doc, the the guiding principles and the statement based on that document. To me, that that sounds like we are agreeing with what they're doing. To me, so I'm at my, the motion is to acknowledge, not to endorse, not to adopt. We are acknowledging that that this is work in progress. We're acknowledging that this is the beginning, and this is just, you know, preliminary work. Uh, and we are commending them for their efforts. I have, you know, they're making, they're doing a lot of work. I I see them debate. I mean, I've watched some of the videos. So there's the the motion is to acknowledge, but I don't want us to, I don't want to send a message of we're endorsing fully because of what I just explained.
Is Nuari planning to to release a revised version of the report? Is this not, is this intended to be the final version?
No, 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 this is, and that's the other thing.
This is not the final version. The town's not asking us to endorse the un, the non-final version, are they?
No, they're asking you to endorse the guiding principles and the vision statement, which in themselves is they're not um, up to par, and they are based on the report.
So um, I also attended and um, I definitely heard Anna made some very good suggestions, which she seemed to be, you know, well received um, by Nuari. And I did not see the actual report. Was was that circulated to us? I saw they were going through it at the meeting, but I don't have a copy of the the draft report, which contained very specific uh, recommendations for housing, and there was a lot in there that's not in these um, in the vision and in the equity statement and the vision statement that we have here. Um, so, yeah, I think if if you know, we could, we could vote to acknowledge, or we could um, basically uh, you know, say we want to take more time and for consideration.
We we don't, I don't think there is a deadline on this, Carol. Remember you were you were checking on that?
No, there isn't. It didn't sound like there's a deadline. No.
So, I mean, it it just, you know, it it seems like there is not much we can do in our end because it's something, it's a different, you know, we are not in in charge of this. They are going to work at their own pace. So with us acknowledging that this is in progress, then we are freed to focus on the business at hand of, you know, the recruiting and the website and so on. So to me is, you know, we we can share, I've shared these concerns already, so I don't know how much more time, you know, and I don't know if that that um, but I'm I'm open to suggestions.
I I have a few questions. Now, this this document that I received, right? Uh, Nuari Vision Statement Guiding Principle and Intentional Practices created by and approved by the Nuari Working Group, March twenty second, twenty twenty one, adopted by the Needham Select Board, March twenty third, twenty twenty one. Are we, are we being asked to adopt that? And it all things, and because you you mentioned before, you didn't mention anything about, you mentioned vision statement and guiding principle. But uh, intentional practices there as well? In the motion?
Yes, I I just, I I grouped them all together. Yeah, there's those two, the appendix A. It's appendix A.
See, an appendix A.
Oh, it's it's in the document. Uh, if you don't have the document, um, the report
I have, I have what was sent to me.
Oh, that's the other thing that I don't think that the actual report was included in the select board's meeting. Yeah, you know, well, I don't know. Yeah.
But there are things about, there are things about housing and stuff in this.
Yeah, but to Rick's point, which I didn't want to, you know, um, take the, you know, take more time, but there is no um, there is no even, they don't have to be so uh, specific, but at least there should be some some listing of how are we going to, you know, we're working on metrics, a dashboard, or, you know, some kind of accountability or metrics like we have in our own equity and inclusion resolution. We have, we have specific measures and we're counting, right? How many books, how many training? There is none of that mentioned here. So it it is a great start, but how are we going to keep track of we're making progress? How do we know that this is, and it doesn't, obviously, it doesn't have to be at the at the granular level, but there has to be something there that says that we are going to be, there's accountability that that we are going to keep an eye on trying to figure out, okay, we're making progress or not. So.
I don't know how that could be measured. I don't know. Since I don't know what's what's being asked for, I don't know how it's going to be measured.
Well, let's say, for example, traffic stops. You know, what is the, what is the percentage of traffic stops of minorities versus uh, you know, uh, people of color versus non-people of color? What's the statistics there? What are the police, you know, and that that is something that the state is supposedly mandating, but nobody, nobody knows what it is. And it, is it bad? Is it good? And and uh, once that's, once the stats, that the statistics are there, you know, do we need to make changes? There's no plan, just for as an example.
And Carol?
Rick, did you, have you read the report? Because I think there are statistics in that report on these different areas of, you know, different departments. Isn't that correct, Anna?
There is, yeah, the report itself has some statistics. Again, there's there are one sided. They're this, they're, and you know, and they are biased by by definition. So
There are, it does address these numbers, you know, according to town statistics. So there's some of that, but I think um, this is was posed as a draft report. Um, and, you know, with the idea that it maybe could become something that would be adopted by town meeting in May. Um, I don't know whether that's still likely to happen, whether it'll get um, you know, revised and be ready or not. Um, but Mary Ann Cooley wrote back to me when I asked her the question about deadlines, that um, this is not, the the report is nothing that will go through the select board. It will go to town meeting, if anything, um, for adoption. Um, so that maybe that's the only deadline. And and if we're really not ready and we feel like we're making strides on our own um, in this area, then um, you know, I think we should acknowledge that we think that they're doing, you know, this is an important effort and um, you know, a worthwhile effort. Uh, maybe the product isn't ready yet, but that we, you know, we are in favor of the project.
Mm hmm.
I I don't know, I have no problem with what's here now, you know, you know. You know, I have no problem with, you know, voting to adopt what we have here now. But uh, but so, you know, why are we, what are we waiting for? I mean, I've I've heard what we've been waiting for, but I don't, you know. I don't want to say, don't adopt this because, you know, we're waiting for something more, but you know.
Basically, what they're asking, my opinion, is they're asking us to endorse this so they can file it away instead. They do do did something and nothing changes, basically. I mean, it's just, it's papers over the problem.
Well, Anna has pointed out that, for instance, the last bullet in the intentional practices section um, just talks about the need to eliminate racial injustice, and Anna's point to her point was that that's not, that's a false expectation. It shouldn't be drafted that way. It more should say to mitigate um, racial and maybe aren't quite ready. Um, and you say the tents, the wills, uh, I I don't actually see that, Anna, but you could probably point that out where you say that it's, you know, we should, well.
That that is the first uh, racial equity statement for the town of Needham, and um, it's the first paragraph. So this is just the best practices when in organizations write diverse and inclusion and equity statements. So usually in present tense to, um, again, it's just, it it may appear as a it it may appear as a technicality, semantics, you name it, but it again, we are, um, it 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 just maybe because of my own experience that it seems I I cannot, it seems like this is, it needs to be redone or or updated. So before I can feel comfortable to to, and if we let it slide, then it's going to send the wrong message to the community. That that is my concern. Not only, you know, it's not too much of semantics, but it's also, again, race, the whole issue about race is very complex and it's very emotional and it creates a lot of, you know, resistance. So we want to be able to make it the easiest way and we're in a position to, and Nuari is actually, not us, it to educate that community. That is critical. A lot of folks are looking to Nuari to guide them. Okay, so so if they're going to put out a document or some statements that are not accurate, that are not empowering in the right way, then we are going to start misinforming the public. You see, that is, that is a concern. So that's why I'm not, uh, Tom, um, 100% behind this.
Yeah. And so Anna has made her her point specifically to the Nuari Committee, so they know what they are. Um, and so maybe it would make the most sense. I think she's, she has a very strong argument. So maybe it would make the most sense for us to acknowledge and commend. Maybe we should add the word commend.
Absolutely.
The Nuari Committee's work in progress. Leave it at that.
That's good to hear.
That's an amended to motion.
All right.
So the most.
It's more of a clarification of the motion, I think.
Okay. Do we, do we have a a motion to approve as amended?
Carol, hi.
Do we have a second?
Now, second.
Second.
All right. Any any further discussion before we vote? All right. I'll do a quick roll call, Ben. Uh, Carol?
Hi.
Rick?
Hi.
Hi.
Anna?
Hi.
Kay?
Hi.
Jay?
Hi.
And myself, I. All right. I'll move on to the next item, going to old business. Uh, first item under that is the website. I'll turn it over to Dimitri to provide an update on that.
Um, sure. I think the next benchmark right now, Sterling is working on a mock-up of everything that the input that we gave them, the sections we wanted, things that we added them to add, things to amend. Danielle had been looking at um, a map that they've shown us of it. And our next meeting, I think, is, Danielle, I can't remember, is it in a couple of weeks or is it?
I think it's the 27th of April, but I could be wrong.
Yeah, I think so. That's about a couple of weeks from today. So that's the next meeting that, um, those trustees that are involved and staff that are involved will have another reveal and sort of go from there in terms of developing. But it's looking good so far. It's looking really good.
I'll say, I saw a preview of of one of the initial designs, um, and it it looks fantastic. I mean, it's not functional yet. It's just sort of a mock-up.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a huge, a huge leap forward.
Absolutely.
They 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 showed us two very attractive designs and there was a general consensus to work from one, but to take some elements from the other, uh, and I, and and everybody was extremely enthusiastic about the work that they've done.
They're incorporating the elements of the second one that many of us liked into the first one. And hopefully, on the 27th, 28th, we will be seeing that.
This is of April?
Yes, of April. Yes, sorry.
And I, I'm sorry, go ahead, Anna.
Is is that for every, for for us to to see it too or for the committee?
Just the committee, just the committee. I mean, there's no state secret, but you know, I mean.
No, no.
Want to be invited.
I'm intrigued now. No, no, I can wait. It's okay.
Okay, okay.
They, I'm sure that they wouldn't mind if you, if you wanted to 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 attend, if, you know, the Zoom call. It's not like they have sandwiches or anything.
If if there are, I will say, if there are any of you that are interested, just shoot me an email and I'll arrange it. They add you to the Zoom link so you can participate if you want.
Yeah, because you know, now is the time when, you know, which buttons are going to be most prominently displayed on the the top of the website and you know, if we have something important to convey now that we want that, you know, whatever, the donate button up higher, or we want something different, uh, you know, it's going to be harder to change at the end of the process.
Like I said, if somebody would like to attend, just let me know. Um, and I can have them add you to the to the Zoom invite.
Can't have more than four. We can't have four or more.
No.
Oh, that's right.
Three.
Oh.
I'll opt out. I'll opt out. It 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 may well be, though, that even if someone doesn't attend, what they do is they share a a version for people to offer feedback on. And so that that might be something that can be shared.
Yeah.
Without necessarily having within the meeting.
Yeah.
Right. I figured about the trustee rule, right? More than three of you.
It's an open meeting.
Power Rangers.
Powers are too too powerful combined. Um, and I believe the plan, oh, Anne, I'm sorry. I think you might be on mute there.
Um, I am laughing very hard. Oh, oh, me, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Anne is waiting.
Anne McFate.
Yeah. And there you go.
I was getting three and four mixed up. I'm I'm all set. I finally figured out the difference. To be funny.
I I was just going to add, I think, um, in terms of when we're going live with the new website, uh, based on the current timeline, it's looking like the very end of May, I believe, or early June.
End of May, end of May, I think.
So it's from from a messaging perspective, and we'll think about how this is going to be messaged, you know, we'll really want to get the word out. And I think Sterling's going to help, but you know, thi- this would be a great thing that the Needham Times could maybe put in front of page. Get the Needham Channel, really, obviously, social media. But getting this out at a time when, um, a lot of people are still staying home is, you know, the fact that we're able to implement this from beginning to end during the pandemic, I think, would be good press for the library.
Absolutely.
Uh, Jay?
Yeah, I just want to say that I had an introductory Zoom meeting with 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 Cindy Gonzalez, the Needham Public Information Officer. And so, uh, I gave her a a heads up uh, about that as well. Uh, and so, you know, she should clearly be in in the loop as far as that, as well as any other public communications uh, that you guys are going to want to have, whether it relates to the reopening of the library uh, or whatever. I've had a, you know, that's something where you should bring her in to the conversation. This is skipping ahead to another topic, but it's all part of uh, integrating Cindy uh, into communicating to the public all the wonderful things that the library is doing in the thoughtful way. Uh, it's given consideration, not only to the website, but also to the reopening plan.
So I think that that does it for the website. Um, I'll move on down to the proposed FY22 budget. Anne and Dimitri, is there anything notable that we should cover there?
Just that you know about what I wrote in my report, that we actually did have some budget increases. It wasn't, the news wasn't all bad.
Right. So there's a decent increase for uh, some some employees, longevity increases.
Those are are not giving some people things and not other people's. Those are just normal increases that occur in a municipal setting.
Right. And, oh, yes, Carol?
I I wanted, Anne, to, could you clarify what was the status of the technology request, which is, I think, a capital one in the recommended budget that went through the FinCom? You didn't mention it.
Is this supposed to be the final year of the three or four years?
I I I'm not sure. I thought it was three, but.
I'd have to check. I'll have to check the printed version.
Okay, I don't, I actually don't have that. I could probably find it somewhere online, but maybe you could just let us know what the status, you know, how they treated a request if, I think we did make one.
I think it was for the public computers.
Yeah, I think so.
Yes, you're right.
There were staff computers last, in last year's approved, um, item capital.
Right.
But was that in the approved, um, FinCom budget that's going to be voted on or not? I guess that's really what I'm wondering.
Staff computers?
No, that was last year, but was the current request included? We asked for it. Town manager recommended it, but then the FinCom, I don't know.
Okay, I'll find out.
Yeah. Okay, thanks.
So we can move on to the next.
The FinCom meets on Wednesday night, so.
Okay. So I'll move on to the next item under old business, which is the plan for reopening the library. Major item to be discussing. And I'll turn it over to Anne to talk about the meeting that happened two days ago to discuss that.
Okay. We have the committee and several people who are not on the committee join the me, the meeting. And it's always very interesting to hear everyone's comments and everyone's concerns. I think the biggest thing I want to come away with tonight is your approval of our date, June 1st. And I've listed in the, in the report I gave you, the reasons why we want June 1st as the date. It will be, um, affords people, the majority of people, to complete vaccination protocols. Over half the staff is now vaccinated, but there are people who are not. And I think a a large member, number of the public is vaccinated also, but it's always better to have more. And this also affords the library, um, time to let the public know about curbside delivery ending and what they can expect when they come to a library that's open. And Cindy Gonzalez is going to, um, help with that also. She's very eager to know what our plans are and very eager to start getting the word out for us on that, too.
You would just add one thing real quick. And it would dovetail nicely with our website being completed by the end of May. We open June 1st, right after Memorial Day.
Okay.
Minor to the other points, but still.
Yeah, okay. Also, during May, there's some parking problems around here. Looking forward to, um, that first May 3rd, when all the people go back to the high school and there's no parking area for them over in in Memorial Field Parking Lot. And we also want to get our new circulation people trained in. And we're still discussing, perhaps we'll purchase a counting device that will keep track of the number of people in the building. I went to somebody's device today. And Mondays are always a good, a busy day and Tuesdays a busy day in libraries, but they were only up to 22% of their capacity. You, oh, you probably want to know, just to say what our capacity, did I tell you?
100?
Yeah. I don't think we'll ever reach it. I really don't. Libraries that have opened, um, people just haven't come in droves like you expect they would. But um, parking, the circulation. So as I said, the main thing I want, want from this meeting is approval of the date, June 1st. Now, for the hours, I can't see being open any hours less than we already are. There are libraries, when they open, have, um, there seem to be open minimal numbers of hours, like 2:00 in the morning and 3:00 in the afternoon. I don't know how people keep them straight. I think going straight through like we do from 9:00 to 5:00 is the best way.
And then it just compresses the number of people. If you reduce the hours and you have the same number of people wanting to get in, it compresses the number of people all at the same time. You spread it out, it gets spread out.
Our other concern, too, is our certification. We want to be heading upwards, maintain what we have and slowly add hours to sort of maintain our certification in terms of the hours that we offer.
Currently, we are not in certification territory. We are, we're we're missing some hours to be certified. However, the MBLC has gone away with the certification on, based on hours and based on spending on materials on the last two years, but who knows what they'll do next year? So we'd really like to get up to the number of 63. I think we're supposed to be, we're only at about 59. I was, um, interested to see a a little message from the Board of Health that suggested we only use one entrance, which is exactly what we had planned to do. One, one entrance. We certainly don't want to have to manage two entrances. Rosemary Street Parking Lot, we'll have to do contract, contact tracing. Make sure everybody's wearing a mask, make sure they're observing a six-foot distance. And see, and keep the outside book drops going, the the drops, as we call them. All material will be returned. There are no material will be returned to the circulation desk. We will block off those openings. The only thing that should come in is if someone's damaged a book and wants to pay for it. And then we'll take your check, but not your money. Could becoming a cashless operation. Probably to the consternation of the finance committee, but anyway.
No, yeah, the cleaning of the of the catalog terminals. Who's going to do that?
The, after someone has used it, some of the staff will have to go over and clean it.
So you limit the number because it's a lot of work.
Right. Well, they're limited to half an hour.
I mean, limited in the number of, um, um, terminals that they could use.
Oh, yes. We've removed most of the terminals. There's one terminal at each side of those big tables. That's that's all. Oh, goodness, no. That would be awful if if, well, first of all, we'd have to have plexiglass between the computers. But so we've spaced.
I mean, this is, this is the, I think, the catalog, uh, terminals.
Your packs.
Yeah.
We're still discussing the catalog terminals.
Yeah, because otherwise you're going to have a staff person just, their whole job is just going around, running around and cleaning keyboards.
And I understand from places that have left bottles of sanitizer near things like that, people take the bottle of sanitizer. So we won't be putting that around.
Question for you, Anne. Um, or just in case there's any staff members who want to get vaccinated but haven't been able to get fully vaccinated by then, which is conceivable if, you know, if it's opening up to the general population on the 19th, and it takes a couple of weeks to get an appointment, and then it takes another five weeks to get full immunity. Will folks who are not fully vaccinated have the opportunity to work in a part of a library that is not directly public facing?
Only if they're full timers. There are no jobs for part-timers behind the scenes, so to speak.
Do they have, they have barriers, plexiglass barriers?
We have plexiglass barriers in the children's room, at the children's desk, in the circulation desk, in the main lobby, and upstairs in the reference room, and one in the adult room also. So the the staff is protected from germ spread. And Danielle had a question?
I think, um, Diane might have had a question, actually. No, okay, nevermind.
Nope.
Don't, okay.
Yeah, it is.
Anna?
I, yeah. I I have a couple of questions here. Um, I'm trying to, I'm trying to put myself through the shoes of of a patron coming into the library. So are there going to be signs outside reminding people 30 minutes only, you know, mask up, etc. This, okay. And and how are you going to enforce the 30 minutes?
I'm not really worried about it because I don't think we'll reach our 100 maximum people. I think people will be out of here if if they're not finished in half an hour, if they take five more minutes. I I really don't think it's going to, going to make a difference.
Anna, I can, I can address that. This electronic system we're considering purchasing, which, by the way, neighbors Wellesley, Newton, Natick, many other libraries have. What it does is, not only does it display, like it, it does an LCD display when you're coming into the library, yet under capacity, you know, so many people. When it reaches three quarters of capacity, all the supervisors and administration get a text saying, kind of like, if you will, Danger Will Robinson, it's three quarters capacity. And when it's full capacity, it's red. And all of us, those of us, you know, in administration, supervisors, will get a text saying, go out there now. So the way Newton and Natick and Wellesley have done that, when administration or supervisor gets that message, they go out there, they make a public service announcement and say, folks, I'm sorry, for those of you who've been here 15 minutes, half an hour, whatever the limit is, we please ask you to leave the building, give it opportunity. Other folks are waiting outside to come into the building. Other folks are waiting outside to come into the building. And for whatever, sorry, go ahead.
So you're planning to have, if you've reached capacity, you're planning to have a line outside?
Yes.
These people, okay. So that is also, okay, that was my other thing. And you, when are you going to make the public service announcement at the 3, 75% capacity or do you want to wait until 90? I mean, what?
Wait, we might, we'll, we'll gauge it and see. You know, to give you an example, where this was most recently an issue was in Natick, when they had their town election, because the library was one of the polling places, the lower level of the Natick Library was where people went to vote. So as people were coming in to vote that day, their texts were going crazy. So the director and assistant director were constantly out there. Monitoring, making sure, but again, people weren't going to the stacks, they're going to the lower level where they were voting. So that's a unique situation in that case, but I know from Newton and Wellesley as well, when it gets to three quarters, you keep an eye on it and then you sort of walk around, sort of see what it looks like. And people are keeping socially distant for the most part. You, you know, from what I was told from a colleague in, in Newton, you know, they, they hope that people, you know, they, they kind of keep, what people know, when they see like, if they see me or Ann walking around looking around, they might know like, wow, I may get, maybe need.
What did I do? What did I do?
Director Newton said to me anecdotally, when she goes out on the floor, people see her, they go, oh, hey, how long have I been here, you know, so? So we'll play, well, you know, we'll tweak it as we go along, but that's to give you an anecdotal sense of, you know.
One, one quick question before Danielle, I know you have your hand up. Are you also planning to remove some of the chairs, all of the chairs?
Absolutely, absolutely.
All of the chairs.
Yeah, we want to make it clear, unfortunately, that people cannot stay. They can browse, they can grab their stuff, they can check it out.
I'm a little concerned about no chairs at all, that you'd not be able to actually sit. And, you know, I'm wondering whether, especially for older folks who.
True, true.
How important is that to have no chairs?
You know, Kay, what we're going to do is we're going to, we're between Danielle and Anne, myself and a couple of other supervisors, we will look at other libraries and sort of see how they approach that. If they literally have no chairs, like you say, I'm sure they have, you know, I'm sure if somebody, I think somebody named told me that when they keep an eye on that, if there's somebody that seems to need it, they will, they whipped out a chair and brought it out there for them, you know? So it's going to.
There are no chairs, they'll sit on the floor or the tables.
The, the kids, the teenagers will sit on the floors.
You know, that's one of our concerns because once school is back in session, I know we'll have signs, I know it'll be publicized, but we will have to sort of, as they get comfortable, say to them, you know, you can't stay more than half an hour.
Yeah, I mean, but, but I guess my question is, why can't you be comfortable for 15 minutes and sitting in a chair? I, I don't quite.
Some libraries have put a few chairs back out.
Yeah, yeah.
Just, just that. Now, the library only allows people to be in the building 15 minutes. So they decided to put a chair in the newspaper and magazine room so someone could sit for 15 minutes and read the newspapers and magazines.
And Kay, you know, nothing's actually stolen. We, as we go along.
Whatever is necessary, we will do.
We're not without fourteen people.
Just raising your hands when they have questions and want to speak. So I'll go back to Jake quickly.
Yes, I, I just want to say, I, I, you know, it seems to me that everything has been thoughtful and the reasoning is sound with regard to the reopening. I want to emphasize again that I think there's an opportunity here to be communicating with the public in a way that lets, lets them know all the good work we've done and lets them understand the thoughtful consideration that has gone in to this decision. Some of you may know that there was a letter to the Needham Times a, a couple of weeks ago. You know, and, and this gentleman had emailed some trustees as well, questioning while we're not open, where other communities are. And I think there are thoughtful responses to that, but I think responses should be made. And so I urge you again to communicate with Cindy Roy Gonzalez, who's familiar with this, so that we can now, in a thoughtful way, communicate to the public in all, in all appropriate ways, including via the Needham Times, a response that answers whatever might be the criticisms. And in fact, takes the opportunity to promote the library and the good work and, and thoughtfulness it's been doing. So I think there's an opportunity there that, that I would urge you to take advantage of.
And Jay, we, we both, Anne and I have been in contact with Cindy and we're going to be in contact with her again after tonight.
I, I, okay, because I spoke with her yesterday.
Anna?
Yeah, I would add to Jay's comments, also the possibility to have some public service announcements similar to what we had with the voting, you know, to encourage people to vote. We could have also even maybe a few weeks prior to the opening. You know, kind of getting people, alerting them and, and kind of saying, you know, maybe some little videos or something with a Needham channel to do, start promoting this. So that is more of a, the newspaper is great, not everybody reads newspapers, some other people are more in social media, right? So how can we just, at one, you know, two-minute video of the do's and the don'ts? And just send that everywhere and then also have some kind of social media, you know, posts that, that do's and don'ts. So that people kind of like really memorize them in a way, but a public service announcement may be something else to consider.
Absolutely, yeah.
And one of the areas that bothered me, bothered me that I was so more concerned about, and I see Paula is here, is the children's room. And so I measured square feet in there and settled on a limit of 15 people at one time. And nobody, no youngsters without a parent or an older person. Haven't got the, quite the wording we want for it, but, yeah, but along those lines. The children's play area is totally closed and so are the, the storytime room and the craft room.
I, I would make that very clear in your communication. So the people are not expecting, you know, like right there, front and center. Because a lot of families come to the library for that particular space.
So we'll have lists. This is what you will be able to do. This is what you will not be able to do for the current time. All subject to, everything's subject to change.
And the video PSA is a great idea.
Danielle, did you have a question?
I just wanted to add back to the, the occupancy counter that we're looking into. In addition, there, it, it seems very configurable. A lot of different libraries have used it. And some people, like Dimitri said, some libraries are having like, you know, there's 20 people, you know, in the library with the max of 50 or 100. But, and then it turns yellow, yellow, you know, and red. But other libraries are actually having it, you know, turn red and instead of saying numbers, it says stop. So you know, very, very clearly, you cannot go in until it turns green again. So there are, there are different ways we can really make it, you know, really easy for the public to, to understand what's going on and what the limits are. And if you can and can't go in, it seems very customizable.
Carol?
I just wanted to know, where do you get such a machine? Is it expensive? How are we paying for it? Which budget is it going to come out of?
It's not like me.
I'm still working on getting a quote. I have to get some measurements from the custodians and definitely Dimitri is going to help me tomorrow and get out a measuring tape. So we've got to like measure the doors and stuff. But the company is called Sensorz. It's a similar company to how, what we're doing with the people counters. So it's a similar enough technology, but not similar enough that we can, we can use the people counters.
Well, the people counters tell us how many people went in, but not how many went out, right? It doesn't subtract.
Counts out too.
It comes out too, but it's, it's different enough that doesn't. It doesn't, it doesn't quite, I asked, I was like, well, can we use that? But apparently it's, it's two different. It's not going to project it so people can see, it's not going to alert, alert the staff. So it's a, it's a very, it's a different technology.
Different product, okay.
Yeah.
This brings us to the Friends. In case you don't know, they had a very successful book sale last Saturday. They raised $1,836 and, and they were quite pleased. It took some hard work on the part of a few people to gather, to gather. A lot of people deserve credit and Mary McMahon certainly deserves a lot of credit for it. I think they did a great job and they'll look back to us and did you have so much fun? You're going to do it in May too. So maybe they'll have another pop-up book sale. But they would like to have the ongoing sale operating and we're studying ways that that can be cashless for the, for the staff.
Okay. And for the, for the reopening plan in general, do you need our vote to endorse it?
Especially the date right now, maybe not. And not everything that we've planned because that's all subject to change. But date, I'd like you to endorse the date.
Okay.
I have a question first.
Yes, Tom?
I think my hands up there, but it's hard to see the light. But was there, myself and other people like the curbside service a lot. Is there any possible way to, to do that as well?
No, we can't do both. We don't have enough. Logistics don't work. We can't, we can't staff the inside of the library, have people coming in and also. And then also from perspective, from public health perspective, we're doing that, there's too many paths crossing, too many people in at the same time.
People will miss that. I, I'm sure you'll get some, you'll hear about it.
That was part of, part of our thinking about June 1st because that gives us enough time to publicize that curbside service will end on Saturday, May 29. And give people six weeks to get used to the idea and absorb it. So that after that, you know, we're going to start on June 1st with browsing.
Jay?
I, I'm just wondering, does it make sense to maybe designate one day that would be open for curbside? Does it, you can't have it, it has to be one or the other. It can't be some sort of combination in terms of, you know, what, what, a particular day?
Anne and I, oh, sorry, go ahead, Anne.
I'm just, don't confuse people. The, 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 the one way you make it the best is the best. Because if you start going one day for this and one day for that, then they're going to remember.
And Jay, we did run different scenarios with our supervisors just to see how we could make that work if possible. And it, it just, it doesn't really, it doesn't really hang together. There's no. If we do one thing, then we're not satisfying what public health wants us to do in terms of keeping us all apart.
Okay.
Okay.
I, I, I didn't, I didn't realize that when I made the statement before, but yes, it, it makes sense. It makes sense that they could do it that way. And because in all honesty, it's, you know, you're only going to be there for 15 minutes anyway. You know, it's not going to be, it's not going to be a line to wait in to go to the circulation desk. And that's, and that's, it's also, you know, a lot of the curbside stuff with people who would normally come in and browse to get. Wouldn't that be true? Wouldn't that be true?
Right. And you, I don't know, but somewhere in all my writings, I thought I wrote a statement about my survey that I stood outside and took from.
Yes.
Interviewed people as they came out with their bags. And they were all quite pleased with their bags and quite pleased that we offered this service, but they still would have rather have been in the library browsing themselves.
I think we're probably at the point, you know, we've got a very busy agenda for the rest of the meeting. We've got a lot of ground to cover. I, I would suggest we move to a motion now, if, if we're in general agreement that June 1st is a good date. If, if so, do we have a motion?
I move that we endorse the, the date of January 1st.
I second.
June 1st, June 1st, nevermind, June 1st.
Can I add with an understanding that, that this will be communicated clearly to the public, you know?
Of course.
Okay.
Could I just ask you to say again, Tom, it's to endorse? I don't think it's our decision, right? It's, we're endorsing the decision by the library?
Well, well, I'm, I'm thinking the last time we did it was, we, we didn't want the, we didn't want the library to open till it was safe to the staff and public. Was that the thing we did in the last meeting? And this is to indicate that we, you know, that we endorse that they feel it'll be, that June 1st is a date that will be open, be safe for the staff and the public.
Yeah, okay.
We've got a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
I second.
All right, all in favor, and I will run through the list. Carol?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Anna?
Aye.
Kay?
Great plan, aye.
Jay?
Aye.
And myself, aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. It's exciting to be, to be moving back a little bit closer to normal. And certainly looking forward to the next phase of reopening after that, once it's safe to do so. So as I mentioned, we've got a lot more things on our plate tonight. I'll try to get through them as quickly as we can. The next item on our agenda is the Equity Inclusion Resolution. I, I would pass that over to Dimitri and Anna for any updates on that front.
Nothing on my end.
Nothing on my end either.
Okay. In that case, we'll move on to the strategic plan. And I have the honor to run through the technology report, which we had circulated earlier. I'm just going to run through it pretty quickly right now and just try to hit the high points. Obviously, and this kind of follows up on the technology report from 2020, but this has been a big year for technology in the library because we've had to rely in it much, much more than in prior years. You know, notwithstanding the fact that we've still had very robust print circulation, print circulation as well, considering the circumstances. So I'll quickly run through the technology goals that we have here. The first action item was to assess the needs of community for technology programs. Dimitri is on the Minuteman Library Network's Innovation and New Technology Working Group. Danielle works with patron-centered departments to respond to new patron needs. During FY '20, the library purchased 15 Chromebooks, which during the shutdown were used to help some staff work from home. During FY '21, and quite recently, the library began lending out five of those Chromebooks as well as five Wi-Fi hotspots to Needham residents. My understanding is that the usage of those has been pretty limited so far, but hopefully we can get the word out through social media and then through the new website, that those are resources and the hope is that those will be very popular with patrons. The server upgrade to Windows 10 is completed. There's still a few group policy settings that need to be redone. This affects the adult, adult public computers. Let's see, the foundation is responsible for the cell phone locker, which of course is not being used right now. The technology office has a bunch of hardware and devices that are available for staff and patrons. Staff and public computer troubleshooting is done on a continuous basis. The Friends have paid for some USB drives, which are sometimes given out to patrons when they don't have one of their own to save documents while they're using public computers, which is a great resource. And thanks to the Friends for that. The Friends also paid for the 3D printer. During FY '21, the library added a number of new electronic resources. We've got Ancestry Library, A to Z Maps, which has both country and city maps as well as language lessons. We've got Brainfuse Help Now, which provides live tutoring and other study tools. And Niche Academy or Niche Academy, which we discussed earlier and provides a number of tutorials on everything from websites to Libby to Canopy and other library resources. Beginning in FY '20 and continuing through the past fiscal year, a number of these, including Overdrive, Canopy and Hoopla, were expanded as a result of the pandemic. Hoopla is, started at four checkouts, per, checkouts per month, it was increased to eight in FY '20 and is now at 10. Staff have also increased ebook purchases to keep up with demand. The social media presence has continued to expand. As I'm sure we've all seen during the pandemic, staff has done an awesome job of really getting a lot of community interaction with the library's Facebook and Instagram pages and YouTube channels. And those have proven invaluable ways to stay in touch and connect with the community while we're shut down, even, even for those folks who aren't doing curbside. There was an update to RB Digital, which was purchased by Overdrive in 2020. RB Digital magazines were transferred over to Overdrive just this past month. During FY '20, the library began offering the RB Digital Press Reader Unlimited, which is a newspaper service. But that experienced low usage and was not renewed for FY '21. I'm just going to skip down here to the more significant items. As we discussed earlier, thanks to Dimitri and Danielle and many other, many other staff members. The new library website design is well underway and we're expecting that to roll out to the public in late May. Sterling Brand Works is creating the site and that is funded, of course, jointly by the Friends and the Foundation and many thanks to them. I'm going to move down to the second action item, which is to plan and deliver basic and intermediate instruction for current and emerging technologies. I'm going to move down to the second action item, which is to plan and deliver basic and intermediate instruction for current and emerging technologies. Instruction for patrons is completed by reference in children's departments. We found that adult patrons prefer one-on-one instruction for technology issues rather than more structured classes. And that's where most of the instruction has been focused on. That being said, there is a new position that was added and a new reference librarian, audio visual specialist. And there may be the possibility of trying out a new format for technology classes going forward. Rather than purely one-on-one. And Danielle and Dimitri, feel free to jump in to the extent I, I skip over anything or, or misstate anything. Danielle provides technology instruction to staff. The Minuteman Network also creates videos regarding staff learning and other instructional items. Reference staff have attended many, many webinars during FY21. To help educate themselves and educate patrons on electronic resources. Sarah Breen is on the Minuteman's Digital Content Working Group and purchases both juvenile and young adult materials for the network. So she receives updates on those resources and is plugged into that issue. Moving down to action three, which is to determine and create a matrix of staff competencies ranging from basic to advanced skill levels. A couple of years ago, we determined that this was not possible to complete, given that it's not a realistic action. The issue here is that there's just a very wide variety of trainings and skill levels that are required for the different technologies that the library uses. So creating a master matrix was not really practical. I'm going to skip down to objective B, which is to maintain and improve a level of technology supporting accessibility to library materials. Action one is to maintain and review a technology plan, addressing the technology infrastructure, including maintenance upgrades. Wi-Fi accessibility and other network capabilities. We concluded that this was completed for FY21. Probably the biggest, the biggest item here is the server migration to Windows 10, which offers a number of new accessibility options. Danielle would like to increase the Wi-Fi bandwidth in the library. And this would be something that would be completed once patrons are allowed back in the building. And also just for an ongoing item, staff had requested to obtain quotes for. A better security camera system for the library, and this is something that will continue to highlight in, in the technology plan as a short-term goal. And as I mentioned earlier, during FY21, the library began lending Wi-Fi hotspots and Chromebooks. The second action item for, for objective B is to maintain and develop sustainable funding for technology needs. To remain flexible and adaptable to a new and emerging needs, including Minuteman Network membership. We concluded that this action item was also completed for FY21. The funding for technology needs and for Minuteman membership is part of the town budget for the library, for the most part. There are, I believe, a couple of items that are still paid out of, I believe, state aid. Although, and correct me if I'm wrong on that point. And I'll move down. Replacement of staff and patron computers is traditionally part of the capital planning budget. There were a few computers replaced during FY20, but many library computers will still need to be replaced in the near future. Action number three is to deliver regularly scheduled classes supporting library resources, including database or books. We concluded that this is not completed. And this goes back to the preference that we found for patrons to have one-on-one. Coaching rather than more formal technology classes, although there's the possibility to provide some classes in a new format. Perhaps a virtual format in the future. And action four is to provide training and assistance of adaptive technologies to improve and enhance the experience for hearing and visually impaired patrons and staff. Really, the biggest update here is the move over to Windows 10, which includes a number of new accessibility features. As Danielle has highlighted, as well as its new browser edge, which features just a plethora of accessibility options. And hopefully over the coming months, staff will become more and more familiar with those accessibility features. To the extent that it will help any patrons. Moving down to action number five, to digitize Needham's local archives, collection and provide access via the library website and the digital Commonwealth. We've concluded that this is completed for FY21, although due to the pandemic, there were some road. Some roadblocks for that. The house negatives for the 1950s houses were returned to the archives. And those are now used for some of the Throwback Thursday posts that the library has on its social media accounts, which have been resoundingly popular during the past year. There were a number of other resources which were going to be sent into digital Commonwealth, but they have closed down due to the pandemic. And the only other item to mention under that is that the buffering machine has been repaired. Digitized images are provided as a CD and kept in the archives and can be requested by. Or requested through Danielle. So that's the technology update for FY21. Let me know if you have any questions. Or any, any comments or changes to the update. Carol? I, I think you're muted right now.
I was just going to say that the niche, what's it called, niche academy? Should actually be a, you know, a, a nice piece to add to the, to the trainings as opposed to just strictly having reference. People have to give one-on-one help, which still might, you know, may be needed, but. That could be a big help for at least a starting point for patrons. Aside from classes, aside from one-on-one coaching, that would be a big help. I think it should be a big help. Like, I'm looking forward to it.
Great. And many thanks to Danielle and Sarah and many of the, and Dimitri and many of the other staff members who provided a great deal of input. For that update. So the next item on, under the strategic plan is a roadmap for achieving strategic actions, and this relates to staffing. So I've been putting together some statistics just for my own edification as well as. Help the, the next strategic plan process. I, I've been comparing our library to a number of our peer communities on a number of different metrics. MBLC makes all of these statistics public and it's a great resource for, for comparing libraries and seeing where we stand. And one of the things, and this is something that I believe has come up in the past. Is that our level of part-time to full-time staff is quite a bit higher. That is to say that we have fewer full-time staff as a percentage of overall staff. Than most of our peer libraries. We're somewhere in the mid twenties. The average for our peers and the peer group that I chose for this purpose are Route 128 adjacent towns or towns that are within Route 128. With the population of between 20 and 40,000. I'd say the average for that group was around 40% full-time. And some towns went as high as 60 or 70%, full-time. So this is something that I just wanted to put out for discussion with everybody as something that we might potentially focus on in the coming year. Both in terms of our discussions with FinCom and with the town, as well as. With any new library director candidate. And when we think about what's going to be going into our strategic plan for the next plan. And Anna and Dimitri, did you have any thoughts about sort of the current, the current mix between part-time, full-time? Is, is there a reason why we tend to focus more, more in part-time or?
I can tell you. I can tell you the reason. I can tell you the, the whole. Story of this, it all goes back to the year around 1992, when. An override didn't pass by 11 votes and the library's budget was cut to 53, by 53%. And I mean, the whole place. We, we had to let go all, all of the part-time staff and. I think we also had to let go of four full-timers. And then the word came from the, to restore the library, word came from the Board of Selectment and all, and the word was. Put the library back together again, the least expensive way you can. And that's why we wound up with so many part-time people.
Tom? And sorry, you're on, you're on mute right now.
My hand wasn't up.
Oh, okay. So I guess the question is, you know, that, that, and I understand that that happens. Do you, do you remember which, which year that was or approximately what year?
It was one year after we operated for a whole year with a 53% budget cut. The next year, there was another override and the library's part of it passed higher than any other group in town. And, but it's still, it's still, you know, still wasn't enough money to. Do a lot with.
Yeah, it was 1990 was the bad year, Ann. I have vivid memories of that. But it also took us almost 30 years to get back our young adult position. That was one of the ones that did not get replaced.
So I guess one question for, for us as a board is, is this something that we're willing to advocate for over the next year to potentially. Hopefully increase the percentage of staff who are full-time. Obviously, this would be a concerted effort. We need to think about funding for that. Do some studies on where our funding stands compared to our peer towns and make a case for it. But is that something that folks are generally, generally amenable to or?
Well.
Carol?
I, I think it's definitely worth the effort. I mean, I, I hear from different quarters that, well. It'd be nice to do it, you know, I, I just didn't have time to do it, kind of saying, I don't have any help. I don't have any, not even a full-time administrator for. Administrative help for the director. Which affects what the director is able to. Go in, you know, we haven't, as far as I know, you haven't requested a full-time. You know, administrative help, but that actually may be a pretty important piece, but also other, other staff members. But I, I think we're going to have to support whatever we. I, I think we need to start at the beginning with a study, a staffing study with some sort of a, you know, a contract. For someone to study what, you know, what other kinds of towns do. I mean, Rob, you've done an excellent job and I really. I, I'm sure you could do as good a job as the consultant would. But, you know, I think that there's a credibility to having somebody come from the outside. And look at the, you know, impartially look at it, compare us to our peers. And decide who our peers even should be. And make some recommendations. And, and then based on that, we make some financial decisions. About what, well, really what we want to request and. If, if that doesn't come through, you know, what we want to do about it. But I think the state aid is, even though we spent a lot of money out of state aid. There's still a pretty good chunk there, and I think that. It would behoove us to use some of that toward preparing ourselves for this push. I think it's really an important push. I, I think having more full-timers is really important. More staff in general is really, you know, because I think we're stretched really, you know, what I observe is we're stretched really thin. Every single person is, you know, you can't get the sniffles or else somebody else is going to have to work over, you know. So, yeah, I, I think that would be a good, a positive part of an effort. If, if the trustees decide they do want to push this and if the library director wants to push this. You know, they would, the new director too, you know, you know, would just be a. Ongoing process.
Okay, Rick, I, I think you'd had your hand up.
Yeah, I. I thought this, this would have been on, on the, on the agenda to address this. But if you recall, and that was my section of the strategic plan in terms of talking about staff development. And then Dimitri and I have been having meetings. And we had come to the conclusion, and I thought we were going to propose it tonight to the, to the board, that we actually do spend. Money from the state aid account to hire a consultant to come in and look at staffing. Dimitri and I have a meeting and Dimitri has some, has some potential folks that he's already spoken to. That could be potential people that would come in and do the study. The advantage of this for a number of different reasons. One is, obviously, we, as, as people have pointed out. The, the mix in terms of part-time and full-time staff. That, that full-time staff is limited, which limits their abilities to do, do a, a number of things. It is certainly the towns, to the towns' advantage. To try to staff as many people as possible on a part-time basis, because they don't have to pay benefits. And it reduces their expenses. And it's exceedingly difficult, I'm sure, for our staff to try to. Plug the holes and, and, you know, determine what part-time staff, when. And if someone calls out, do we have staff that, that can come in and replace somebody if, on a part-time basis and so forth? It's, it's, it's constantly trying to, you know, schedule these folks in an optimum, optimum manner. And so in a lot of ways, a lot of our, the intent of the trustees to get, to do certain things is very limited because of the staff structure. How many people we have part-time and full-time. And we know that we will never be successful in making proposals to the FinCom unless we do a study. And have an outside person come in and look at the entire structure of our, you know. How we structure our staff, what's the, what's the level of staffing at the library? What's, what's the, the patron demand now and in the future? And are we staffed to, to, to accommodate what the, what the patrons are looking for? So I think we need to. To have a, a study done. Not only in terms of the level, the number and level of staffing, but in terms of the structure of the jobs as they currently exist. And what, what's the optimum way of structuring these jobs going forward? Then we, we have an outside source that would support. Proposals to the FinCom and Town Management. And we'd be in a much stronger position to make our, make our arguments in, in that fashion. So. I was going to speak to that tonight, that in, in, in concept, that we as a, as a, a board. In concept would. Would be favorable to hiring a consultant. To, to review, to do a full stem the stern study in terms of the, the nature of the structure of the staff. And how, how we, how we are staffed, so.
You could make that part of your next strategic plan.
I don't think we want to wait that long. That's part of this strategic plan, that we want to do that study as soon as possible. So that in the next budget, budget period, we can present to town management what we think the optimum staffing is.
My comment is, some people prefer to have, you know, prefer to work part-time because they don't need the benefits and whatever. However. I don't think it's a good idea, the percentage we have, because I think if we have, if we want, we have very good employees. But if we want, you know, quality employees. You have to, you know, pay them a living wage. And then in this day and age, you have to provide for retirement and healthcare. I think, I think you have to do that too. It's an obligation an employee, an employee has. To, and so, and I think the, the burden, you know, we got, we're out of sync with a lot of places. Because we've added so many things, like earlier openings, you know, which we funded through state aid initially. Some of the openings, which we, you know, we, as pilot program. And then when we put, cut them in, we, we were allowed to keep them only because we. Didn't require any more full-time staff. And we were able to, we able to do it with, that's why, that's one of the reasons our proportion of, of. Of, of, of part-time is, is so high. And I do think it, it definitely deserves looking into.
Rick, would you, would you care to make a motion?
Well, I think, I think we're, it's premature. I think what we want to do is, um, Dimitri and I are going to meet, we're going to meet with a consultant. We'll make a determination recommending a consultant and understanding what the cost would be to do that. And then outlining what he would, what he or she would do. And at that point, go back to the trustees and say, we are proposing to hire this consultant. This consultant will do the following and produce the following report to the trustees and then, and, and ask for that. Using state funds to do that.
Okay, Kay? Uh, you're, you're on mute.
Yep. Um, I'm just wondering, um, how this would dovetail in with, um, you know, we're obviously going to be launching a search for a new director and we have a strategic plan consultant coming up. And I'm, I guess I'm a little concerned about how all these things would fit together and that we do it, you know, in a way that makes sense, in an order that makes sense. Question.
Uh, Anna?
I, I had the same thought, Kay, and I'm trying to figure prioritize perhaps, you know, search for director, strategic plan, or those two concurrently. And then, I don't know. I mean, they're all equally important issues. I mean, with the director being the priority, in my opinion.
Can, can I add one thing? And this is separate. You folks have to discuss this. But in terms of logistics, the two firms that, uh, Rick and I have been talking about and I've reached out to, they do this sort of work. You know, there, there aren't, New England has too many smaller library consultants that really don't do this kind of thing. But like the two consultants that they were now to, they've done Greenwich Library in Connecticut. They do the Queens and, um, Brooklyn Library. They've done it for Fairfax County. So it's something that they do and it would be obviously a separate function than your search for a new director, you know, and, and a strategic plan. So I think, you know, that's for all of you to discuss where you want to take the cost out of and all that. But it's something that does, you know, they do this sort of restructuring, looking at, at staffing at other libraries. So it would go on a separate track, I think. Sorry.
And, uh, Jay?
Just in, in order to respond to one part of Anna's question, when Dimitri and I spoke with Chuck Flaherty, initially as part of the, uh, possible development of a new strategic plan, but also to update him with regard to the leadership transition. His position strongly was that, uh, the strategic plan is secondary. Correct me if, if Dimitri, if you had a different memory, but that, but, but that the real emphasis should be on the, a thoughtful process for selecting a new director with the notion being that, that questions about the future would be part of the interview process with the prospective candidates who are looking to become directors. Uh, and in addition, a new director should have a, a role in playing and, in helping to, to guide what the strategic plan is. So, uh, there's no, uh, time requirement in terms of the Massachusetts Library Commission or anything that would compel us to, to, to move it forward. Uh, and so that, that's, that's part of the feedback we got from Chuck Flaherty that I think is worth sharing.
And, and I did, I did reach out to the MBLC to Rob Povini and he said that is, you know, he, his perception was the same thing. If you're looking for a new director, strategic plan is secondary. You could put that off. The MBLC will give us an exempt. We, we don't have to file one. If we needed to file exemption, they would be very open to that. So.
Then, then the question remains, then the director is priority and then we can also do the assessment to staffing assessment. Which the director, new director, now being familiar with our operation, will have marginal input.
And, and the director would be able to, um, make use of a staff assessment.
Exactly.
Right. It sounds like, oh, go ahead, Carol.
No, I was just going to say, so, I mean, all of this putting it together, sounds like maybe, um, the strategic plan is pushed back a little. And the, uh, the other two, though, we should move, you know, obviously, we're going to move ahead on the, the director, um, process. But the leader, new leader, but also, um, on the staffing and study. So my, my feeling is that you should go ahead, Rick and Dimitri, and, and, and figure out more detail about that. About a consultant and what it might cost and, you know, what the process might be.
For what it's worth, I'm totally in favor of that too. Just hopefully, if we can do these in parallel. Because for the reasons that Rick stated, uh, very, very eloquently, you know, that this is a major, a major issue. And I, I don't say an issue, but a major area where we should really evaluate what the structure is right now. And I, I'd hate for our staffing structure now to be dictated by, you know, the events of thirty years ago. So thanks, thanks to Rick and Dimitri for, for moving that forward. And we can check in, we can check in the next meeting to see, uh, what you heard at that point. So again, cognizant of, of the time, I'll move ahead. The next item on the agenda is the strategic plans relates to marketing and outreach. Did we have any updates on that topic or should we move ahead to the next item? No, no updates, okay. Um, we'll move on to the new strategic plan and I'll turn it over to Dimitri and understand we've had, uh, some discussions with some strategic plan consultants. Um, so Dimitri, I'll turn it over to you.
So it is, it, it's not much different than what Rob had said, you know, what, uh, the two folks that we have spoken with, particularly Chuck Flaherty. And I, like I said, I spoke also to the staff at the MBLC. The consensus does seem to be that if, if the strategic plan can be, it's important, but it should be put off until we have a new leadership. And the MBLC is fully behind that, you know, like I said, in terms of technicalities. If we were applying for an Ellis, you know, Rob Povini said to me, if you were applying for an Ellis D A grant, but you didn't have a new one on file, we could grant you an exemption. That's not, that's not big deal. So I think that's in, in the context of everything that we're talking about, that could probably be put off for, for a year, I think. And that was, uh, Jay, correct me if I'm wrong, that was kind of Chuck Flaherty's assessment as well.
That, that's right. I think logically, the, the, the strategic plan these days is to, you know, have a, have a great process that leads to a, uh, you know, a, a wonderful new library director and, uh, and, and, you know.
Great. Well, we will move on to the next item then, which is the public facing document. Kay, thank you very much for circulating that today. A- any updates on, on sort of the status or what we might use that for?
Um, it's pretty much available. I know last year we put it out for people in the library. And so, you know, it's, it may not, I mean, it basically just summarized what happened in twenty twenty and stops there. So, um, you know, if people feel like we have a need for it to circulate it, um, to, um, various, um, town entities or public entities, it's, it's available and finished. So.
Thank you for doing it. Yeah, I think that's, that's valuable.
Do you think, oh, Anna, go ahead.
I, I love this. It's terrific. Uh, Kay. I think that there is a lot of material here that could be used as a script for our public service announcement or anything introducing, you know, the changes for the library. So it's not only, we're going to be open, but by the way, you know, this is all we've been doing, not to pat ourselves on the back, but, but also just to remind people of what has been happening. So, so there's lots of information here that probably Cindy Rodriguez Gonzalez, um, can use and, and leverage in different media.
Yes, I can forward it over to her and, um, anyone else we think should see it.
That would be great, actually, if you send it to her.
Okay, I will.
Hey, if you send it to me, I will put it into the next newsletter.
Okay, great idea.
Is, is it possible to, that cable might just, um, print, like, put it up as a screen to read the way they put up a calendar or something, just as a document?
I don't know what it looks like, but if, once I see it, I'll see if it's something that can either be directly sent to them to be put up on that or a case of I will do some rearranging and then send it.
Yeah.
You can post.
We'd probably have to be chunked into like several screens.
Okay, I can always send them stuff in batches because we're always looking for stuff for the crawl.
Oh, good.
And if it's already made up for them, they like it even better.
And how about social media kind of possibilities?
Do the same thing. Um, I will chunk it up and I will speed it out on our Facebook page and everything else. So it's possible. Uh, it can be done like we did the, uh, did you know comments that we did when we reopened the building. There were, what was it, a hundred of those that they did? And every month I would put up a few more up onto the big screen. I can also put it up on our screens too. So it will be up multiple.
Right. I'll get it to you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kay. This is really, if, if, these are really such important things to create. I feel we've, you know, we, we're looking inward when we do these, um, strategic plan and update reports. That's really for ourselves internally, but, um, you know, we, um, until these came along, we really weren't projecting, you know, to the outside world adequately. So it's really excellent. Thank you.
Yes, thanks, Kay. Um, and actually, we're going to come right back to you. Item is the Library Art Exhibits Committee Report.
Yes, so I know it's getting late, but I do need a vote for, um, to approve the, um, Gaia kindly reached out to the Needham Open Studios to do an online exhibit. Um, and it's looking like we may need to approve them possibly for two months, April and May, because people aren't beating down the doors to get their artwork on our website. So we're, we're struggling a little bit at the moment to recruit. So I guess I would ask for a motion to approve the placement of the Needham Open Studios art exhibit on the, um, the website this month and also May.
So moved. A second.
And Carol, you, you had a question?
No, I was just going to say to ratify, it's already up, but yes.
Yes. Yeah, okay, ratify.
Approve and ratify for the.
Approve and ratify.
Yeah.
All right, thoroughly seconded. I will run through the roll call. Carol?
Hi.
Rick?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
Anna?
Hi.
Kay?
Hi.
Jay?
Hi.
And myself, hi. Great. I'll move on then to the McIver series and Carol, um, you've got the update for that.
I'm in charge of that. There is no real, nothing to report yet. Um, I, Anna has kindly offered to help if I run short of ideas. And I don't know whether I will or I won't, but, um, there's really nothing for tonight. Thank you.
Carol, when you're ready, please ask for dates.
I will, yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Um, I'll move on to the Friends of the Library. Does anybody who's on have any updates with any Friends business?
I don't think I have much of an update otherwise, other than I was excited to see that, that, that they made that pop-up, uh, book sale happen. I'm very impressed. I was, sorry, I was at, I was away out of town that, that day and couldn't make it. But, uh, they've, they've had some interesting programs and they're putting together a, a plan for programings o- over next year, which will probably be, you know, Zoom for a while longer and maybe a combination perhaps of live, live, uh, events and in-person events. And perhaps continue to take advantage of Zoom to have some, some programs, perhaps without a town speakers or things like that. So, uh, they're putting that together. I would mention that, uh, there's an interest as well from the Friends and in the Program Committee, uh, to get some new members and then, and to increase, uh, diversity. And, uh, if anyone has any suggestions for people, uh, for friends, you may know, uh, who might be interested in joining the Friends uh, and participating in any of those activities, you know, uh, please let us know.
All right. Thanks for that update, Jay. And, uh, for Library Foundation of Needham, uh, Joan, do you have any updates?
Uh, well, we're not meeting this month, uh, but we are hoping to expand our board. So if anyone knows anyone who might be interested in joining our foundation, uh, please let me know. Because we are reaching out to people now.
I think Carol, Carol will be joining your board.
New rep, I newly.
I will cycle on when Tom's, uh, you know, it's a process in June when you take on, I will sit in the library trustee's seat for the year.
Yeah, okay, great.
As past chair.
Expand. So if you.
Right.
Any of you know anyone who might, yeah, find it interesting to join us, just let us know.
Yeah, I, I did want to say, uh, really a thank you to the foundation for its participation in the website.
Oh, okay.
You know, between the Friends and I, I think the money is all in the trust fund account now. Is that correct, Ann?
Yes.
Um, yes, it is.
And that's just excellent. Um, the trouble is getting it out apparently to get, pay the bills. But, but the money seemed to go in very easily. Thank you for, you know, and thank the board of the foundation for that.
Thanks.
Thank you. So we'll move on to trustee comments then.
I have one.
Okay, uh, Tom?
I remember the Exchange Club and the Exchange Club is dealing with the Fourth of July. And it's, uh, they, they wait and see, but they're talking about a parade. And in years past, the library, you know, has, has had a, uh, I think we even had money in the budget at times for.
We still do.
We still do have money in the budget for a Fourth of July thing. And when I was at the Friends Book Sale, I saw all those book cards.
No, don't use the book cards.
Oh, no, no, we can't, I don't think the, well, I was thinking of the drill team, but I don't think it can, uh, I don't think it can safely, uh, you can't, it's difficult to do some of those maneuvers, uh, social distancing. Trustee.
Well, the problem with using the book carts is that it, um, it, for anything involving the streets is that it produces a tremendous amount of wear on the wheels and the, uh, welded joints of the, of the book truck. So you're, it's a very expensive investment and you're trashing.
Last time, last time we had to replace all the wheels. I remember that.
Well, and you know, the, the joints are just, are just fast, are just soldered. So they're not, they're not like bolted. So every, all of those, um, uh, uses is not what the book truck is designed for, really. So that we wind up with premier book trucks that are much harder to move the materials, um, from one end of the library to the other.
So don't do it. No.
Not for parade, huh?
I don't think I'm capable of doing that route anymore with my needle way it is.
Yeah. Um, and Anna?
Yes, I want to formally thank Carol for her one year as chair. Given the changes we had to undertake with, uh, going virtual and preparation and, uh, your thoroughness and commitment. Carol, I just want to thank you, um, for all you've done and, you know, we just glad to have it on the record.
Well, thanks very much.
Thank you, Carol.
Yes, indeed.
And make a motion that we collectively thank, thank Carol for her outstanding work over the last year as the chair.
Necessary. Thank you, though.
I heard a second. It's, it's on the floor. Robert's rules of order, Dick. All right, uh, Rick?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
Anna?
Hi.
Kay?
Hi.
Jay?
Hi.
Not to put you in opposition, but Carol?
I'll pass on this one.
So, thanks, Carol.
Yeah.
Great. Well, if that's everything, uh, all we need then is a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And? I'll second it. All right. And my apologies, by the way, for, uh, running late. I certainly hope my next meeting will be, uh, closer to the scheduled time. Uh, run through the roll call. Carol?
Hi.
Rick?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
Anna?
Hi.
Kay?
Hi.
Jay?
Hi.
And myself, hi. Thanks very much, everybody. I'll see you next month, if not sooner.